I pledge allegiance to the fighting of the United States of America. And to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, do you lead us in a prayer and maybe send some sunshine?
Sure. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you watch over all of our citizens and members of council and members of city staff as we, as they go through these weather conditions up there. We just pray that you provide safe travels and safety in form for all of them as they continue to endure. We pray that you watch over the activities of the meeting tonight, that the decisions made may be pleasing to you as even citizens that waste your time. Your name went away. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dan. Okay, reading of the minutes from January 2nd.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Weidrich. Second by Stern. Discussion, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, approval of the agenda. Anything changed from here, Monty? All right.
All to approve the agenda.
Motion by Pillar. Second by Hack. Discussion? All in favor of this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will move forward. We will go 5A. Engineers report. Jared, you are up. Thanks for enduring the weather and traveling up here.
Yeah, a little balmy today, right? It wasn't so bad. All right, so what I've got here, I thought it was important to be here tonight because we are gonna just kinda go through a few things with plans and a few projects we've been working on, so. You got my report. Expedition to States obviously is on hold right now. I have the report. At the meeting a month ago, you guys directed us to prepare plans for four different things. That was the alley and parking lot replacement project, the water meter replacement, the sanitary sewer spot repairs, and then the lift station control panel work. We have prepared plans and specs for both, for all of them. We kind of see this as bidding it in a couple different packages. Because they're different, they're different suppliers, it doesn't make sense to bid it all as one contract. So I envision multiple contracts kind of when we're done here. So the first one I'm gonna talk about is the alley and then the sanitary sewer spot repairs, so. Set plans pretty close to the maps you guys looked at previously. My goal tonight is ask for you to approve plans and authorize us to advertise for bids. So generally, parking lots and storm sewer, we had anticipated being able to connect and extend sanitary sewer into that parking lot, but there is no sanitary sewer on that block, First Avenue on the west. Maps were wrong. Would have served a good town that did some investigating, but they couldn't find them either, so. Between the GIS map that you guys have and the city records, there's something off. Doesn't exist, so. We are able to make that, it's not there, but. This parking lot and alley can naturally drain to the west. Problem is that it was asphalt before. Asphalt, you can only get to a minimum grade of about 2%, just the limit to paving, right? Where you got a man standing in the back adjusting the screed and you just, a 2% grade is about what you need. With concrete, we can go down to a 0.4 or 0.5% grade because they can manually do it with a level, so. It'll be flatter. It'll be similar to what the West River Alley looks like, you know? So during rain events, we'll probably have a little bit of water standing on some spots, but it's just the limits that we have. The other choice is to extend storm sewer up from Maine, but I wouldn't do that at this point. I think we just have to go with what we have. So that's what we found while doing the plans. But it is what it is. We should have.
So the green line is just then, I guess, a sanitary?
Yes, sir. It's just that we were counting on this storm sewer line here up on this block. We're gonna tap into it and then run it into the parking lot. And it's just not there. So I feel better. We're doing it in concrete, so. All in all, hopefully the cost comes in just a little bit less than what we had estimated because we had extended. Planned to extend about 100 feet of storm sewer into the parking lot, but it's just, it's not there, so we won't know that expense. As far as sanitary sewer spot repairs go, there's about 15 of them. Monty, on January 5th, I sent a real preliminary. Most of them weren't digging. I think 13 of the 15 weren't digging up and repairing them. Two of them can be repaired with the trenchless methods. So those are shown on the plans here. If you guys, if you wanna see additional justification or notes on each one, there's an email in the file here that show that, but generally, generally it matches the facility plan we did back in July that showed where all the sanitary problems are. And those corrections, you can imagine, it's digging them up, taking out the bad piece of pipe, putting in two couplers and replacing it, so. The work isn't complicated. It's just coordination and the cost of doing it, so. That matches what we had expected. No curve bolt is there. The other two projects are the water meter replacement project. This is the specifications. There's no plans for the meters, but generally what it says is that we're allowing five companies to bid on the project. They'll have to replace the meters, MXUs, the reading system, provide a complete system to read and, you know, meter your water use in town. The five manufacturers that we're allowing to bid on it upon your approval would be Sansas, Neptune, Mueller, Badger, and Camstra. Those are the five that we generally see allowed in this region. So what that would be is we would advertise for bids. This one's a little bit different. Because meter reading systems aren't exactly apples to apples, I'm expecting a little bit more debate on this from the open bids. So we're asking them to provide the bid price and some of those additional things, the annual subscriptions, the warranty. Some companies provide a five-year warranty, some do a 10, some do a 15, some do a 20. Some are extremely backward, so. Pat, what I kind of envision is when we open bids, we're gonna have five bids with dollar amounts, but there's gonna be some other factors that we may have to use to decide who to reward. Maybe consider this more like five requests for proposals. And I would ask the city to maybe form a little committee to make a recommendation to the board on what to reward here. So I tried to lay out the information that we'll be requesting from the bidders in addition to bid price on this page here. Like your guys' opinion on that.
Well, would that allow, if you do a request for proposals, would allow the city to negotiate them? Which would probably be more favorable with bidding.
One of the items is here, we were gonna ask them to provide the price. Don't you like that idea?
We have talked, and I think Monty had talked with Jared before, about the method of this because of the limited number of parties that can provide this service in a way that, typically, when you have a general contractor, then they get the materials and get all the subs and so on. In this case, the material provider will become the general contractor, correct?
Yep.
And so the installers and the people who are replacing the meters will become the subcontractors for the material provider. So it's a little backwards than what you would typically see, but.
These projects like this, this is pretty common. We got, when we got the idea, we got some sample specifications from other cities that are this way. So we're trying, I'm not trying to invent something new here, but we're trying to give you a way to negotiate a little bit, or if, you know, if you have five proposals and they're very close in cost, but one of them can do it much sooner than the other ones, then it may be a factor for you to choose that one. Some of them are known to be 12 to 24 months out from being able to provide the materials, and it, I don't believe you guys can wait that long because your meters are supposed to be dying before then.
Jared, does the state have any care of what we do since we're hoping that they are cautious of this?
That's the other part of it, yet you are getting kosher from the state. I don't believe so. They make us provide a document that proves that it's the best value to the city. So if you remember when we did the water tank in town, you guys were allowed to do a concrete tank and a steel tank because we proved that it was the better value for the city, so. I don't think so. And listen, I mean, if we need to change this, we could change it. It's just, I'm very comfortable with the specifications. And as far as the engineering portions of this, that's fine, but the procurement method here, Pat, if you got some advice or wanna make some changes, then that's no problem for us.
Well, it takes some time now.
So then if you have a real good, then I guess like bid spec, I guess why can't you just, you know, just say?
If I write a really good bid spec that just says the only people that can bid on this are people that can meet. All five of these companies are going to be able to meet our minimum specifications. It's just that some of them are gonna provide a 20-year warranty and some of them are gonna provide a 10-year warranty. And I think you guys want bids from everybody, no matter what, so that we aren't just allowing the best ones. I think, and then I guess the other big problem here is that one of them who may consider to be the best material supplier is a year and a half out. And that's just, that's the problem right now.
So in a way, I guess, so in a way, you know, the previous bids and stuff, you know, that's how, I didn't think that we, then I guess like needed to go, I guess, with a low bid, or, you know?
The specifications say we need to go with the lowest responsible bidder. That's where we do a normal bidding project. If we do a different, like a request for proposal or request for qualifications, we weigh the price a little less. So we did prepare a document. It's got kind of a bidding, a scoring and ranking process that we bring here tonight, Pat, where we have a committee, the four or five people on the committee can make them in each category to determine who they believe is the, you know, the best choice for the city. I should probably send that to you.
I think one of the other things, kind of what we looked at with the water storage tank too, is the life cycle costs. You know, based on this, what's it gonna be? And you can take that into consideration then too, whether it's bidding or just doing the RFP, that's still something you can consider.
Keep talking here. I mean, I'm not set on it. It's just, this is kind of.
Well, yes, I understand, but you're kind of contradicting when you put a bid price on a, you're trying to draw down your year-out guys to your guys. They're all gonna be highly qualified to understand because this is what they specialize in. The thing is, is if you have that bid price on there, you might not be going off the bid price, the lowest bidder necessarily because they're gonna be tight bids. You're gonna be, in my mind, going off of, what is our warranties versus B, C, and D? What is our completion date? What is our? You know, they do, obviously, they probably do rate detection. That's what I, I guess, envision.
I'm envisioning five very tight bids, and I just feel like these other factors are the differentiators.
And that's, I guess, what I'm trying to do.
Yep.
Sorry, Jared.
No, that's okay.
But I just don't know, Pat, with the price on a proposal, does that kind of, does that go against our agreement as a city? I mean, can you, can you have a bid price on this type of RFP? Do we have to have a separate RFP with the price and then a separate? What can we do, you know? Does that make sense? Should there be two different documents, or?
Well, I think you've combined them both into one is what the intention is.
And that's okay, right?
That's okay with city?
Well, like I say, this is a, this is a unique product that you can't find on an open market, so. It was my opinion that it could just be negotiated without putting out for bids as such, but.
Right.
But with the five different providers with these different warranties, if they're not in the specifications for the request or bid, or whatever you wanna call it, you have to get them somewhere.
Right.
Are they, is there anything about warranties in your specifications in the engineering document?
Yes, yes. We're requiring a minimum of a 10-year warranty. Oh, excuse me, a five-year warranty. So we believe that's what all five of them can provide.
And we had some preliminary discussion where we were talking about the cost of owner of it. Because we know that there are different technologies out there when it comes to the technology for reading these meters. Some of them are really going expensive because you can have to pay seller's burden and other are RF communications and can have to end up. So then the one point would be for communications. So those are the factors that we wanna take into account of entities being involved with the warranty. Are there any that will be adding expenses or something?
So right now, you have two proposals. And one is a cheaper proposal with a higher annual subscription fee. And the other one is a higher proposal with a lower subscription fee. And one provides a five-year warranty and one provides a 15-year warranty. And one is way out and one is available right now. And one of them provides all of the, you know, in-house meter reading system and the other one doesn't. So they're very different proposals right now. And it's, they're difficult to compare apples to apples. So we're trying to have everybody provide answers to all these so that we can compare them, you know, specifically based on these categories.
And by combining the meters with the installers or the replacement people, does that complicate things in terms of? Well, the installers could change the bid because they're all on to one price.
It's one, yep, it's one-term key system.
So somebody could have a better quality meter and get a lower price but have too high of a price for the installation.
They could.
And lose out on that under this.
One of the companies has, I believe, hundreds of installers in-house and the other one hires plumbers to do it. And the two proposals that you have are very close in cost.
Okay. They bid those per unit or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
I would imagine that they do enough of it that even if they're going externally, they know roughly how long and how much it would cost to do. I would imagine.
Casey. So in a way, so in a way, two, two that I guess one time that we bought, bought in a garbage truck, you know, I said one on the bids. And even though that, as we didn't choose, I guess, like the lowest bid, right?
Correct.
Chose the best package.
Yeah, correct.
I'm trying to provide some way to prove so that we could select a higher bid rather than a low bid. I'm making them put it on paper here. So if you guys do select a higher-priced one, you've got justification for it.
Right.
So I'm trying to do here, to give you guys the option.
On the procurement side, that makes total sense to me. 110% sense to me.
If there's, there's better ways to do that or if there's additional data that I should add to this, or if you wanna think about it, Pat, and give us some feedback, that's perfectly fine.
We wanna do, you know, we wanna do what's legal, sit on your side.
Yeah, well, I think you have a lot of room there.
I would want you guys to be able to choose something and not be locked into a whole bid.
I agree with that goal.
And I'm eliminating, I'm eliminating, there's 100 companies that provide meters, and we picked five good ones, all right? So we're not just letting anybody and everybody bid on it. It's not, that's not the goal here either, so. Just pick the five that are the regional ones, I guess.
Yeah, we'll, I like this. As long as you're doing it this bad on your end, I mean, you guys can discuss.
You guys will make the ultimate decision.
I like this because you might see something that, you know, contracting that's $10,000 dollars higher. I'm just doing numbers out. We're gonna get more benefit on the backside, you know, and the front side. That make sense? And then if it goes down to, well, we were the lowest bidder. It's not a committee, doesn't matter. Here's why.
If you need to think about this, that's fine. If you give more feedback, that's fine. There's a possibility that we open bids in a month and we got five suppliers sitting here too, watching our move. And just, and we just have to make sure we use the data here to make the best decision for the city. I just wanna make sure we're, so help me modify this as necessary.
And Dan's done a lot of research on this, so I think he'd be, but. We'll welcome your input, Dan.
Thanks.
Okay, so with meters, with all this stuff, my intention was to seek approval of plans and authorize advertisement for bids. If you do that, we need to send the advertisement tomorrow. It'll be advertised on Thursday. We'll open bids on the meter reading portion on February 6th. That's two days ahead of the February 8th State Water Commission meeting. That's a critical date for us because we had the pre-meeting here with the State Water Commission on Thursday and they approved your kosher, which is a big deal. So you guys got 455,000 of grants to go towards this meter replacement project, well, 60%. That's a big deal, so we do wanna stick on the schedule with meters. As far as the alley stuff goes, it's not quite as critical that we open bids on that same time, but I was thinking the following week for the bid opening for the alley replacement and the spot repairs. Either way, we'd be at your February 19th meeting to talk about awarding contracts and know what to do with this stuff. So I guess, if you're comfortable with it, I would seek approval of the plans and specs and authorize to advertise for bids, knowing that we still may have to monkey with the procurement process, you know, either before we publish the ad or maybe just before it hits the newspaper on Thursday. I could always change it via Dan if I had to.
Okay, or we can tap these all once or individually? It's up to you.
Tonight, motion to approve both of them?
Motion by Weidrich? Second, second by Hack. Discussion?
Is this, is this maybe to include the lift station project as well?
You're claiming lift station? It's a good question, Dan. We, no. The lift station specifications are not in here. What our electric, our electrical engineer has to do is to just simply email that out when we have that specification. It's a small, it's, it's, we anticipated just emailing that out requesting quotes on that part of it from electricals, so no, does not include that.
Jason.
Motion is not gonna include any monkeying with that back and forth? We're gonna go with this proposal?
We'll go with whatever.
Whatever they, okay.
So then on this project here, on this boat, I guess, all of this is for, for is just this project, the water meters? It's not like the sewer, I guess, repairs and stuff like that?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, I do both of them. So it'd be the alley, the sewer repair, and the water meter. So technically, all three of them. You don't have plans for the sewer repairs.
I have, in this set of plans here are the sanitary sewer spot repairs too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I do not have the lift station control panels, though.
So then that's what's that gonna run, I guess, dollar-wise on the spot, I guess, repairs?
On the spot repairs? I think it was in our engineers' report from a month ago. Casey, I, I can't recall. Just like 13 of them. I think we're spending like 15,000 apiece. So it will be probably about 200,000.
But this is just to proceed forward, right?
Well, this is to see, this is to see bids.
Yeah.
So on that spot repair, then I guess where's the payment gonna come from? On that, is it gonna be? Be then, be then, I mean, special, or is it just gonna be? I don't know, I guess, I'm just wondering. Monty, where do we take that at?
Well, there was discussions that there is a possibility of funds from the state. We eventually hear now. There's still discussions on that. Otherwise, we would basically be looking at our ARPA and Prairie Dog and probably some of the sales tax dollars too to cover those costs.
Do we have a, on the, on the spot repairs, do we have a critical kind of a hierarchy of what needed to be done, when?
Monty, is it, do you have email on that? Can you, I'd be, okay. And I can resend you the email if you can get to your email.
Dan, do you remember that? Was there a, was there a kind of a priority list? On those spot repairs?
I, I think the ones that were identified were identified because we knew that they needed to prepare this. But they want to face the lift. I don't know that, I don't know.
Okay, so. Okay, so when we, when we televise the sewer mains, we televise all the clay tiles sewer mains to town. And there's fifteen spots that need to be addressed. Thirteen of them need to be dug up. The thirteen, um, I believe eleven of the thirteen are offset joints or missing pieces of pipe or problems. Two of them are sags that could wait, but they are, they're sags, they're some high maintenance problems that you need to clean and flush out. A lot of stuff goes up there. And then two of them can be done intrinsically. So I think of the thirteen, two of the thirteen could probably wait a little bit. But they, they do need to be done. So if, if lowering that cost by a little bit doesn't matter, I think that that would be my recommendation is to leave the two sags. Because there's less risk of a sewer collapse. It's just more of a high maintenance problem. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yeah, yeah, I like those. Even on those spots, I guess, where the. You know, it's where the tap was in the pipe too far, you know, I mean, I mean, even though that that's been like that for, well. A long time, but.
If Monty can find that, um, you know, the first three of them, there's a, there's a communication line bored through the service lines as well. Those can't wait. And then there's, there's ones where there's just pieces of the pipe that's broken off and, you know, there's just dirt showing there. You, you're right, there are, you know, the protruding tap ones, I think, I, I can't remember if we have any of those or not because you're, that's right. If, if there's a protruding tap that's that much in, I wouldn't call that critical. It has to be done before you can line your sewer mains. But it, it could wait. So I, I think two of the thirteen though were sags and eleven of them were very specific failures. Ultimately, what needs to happen is you guys have about fifty blocks of clay sewer mains that, that need a liner installed. Getting the spot repairs done is the first step. So it has to be done regardless. Could they wait? If you get high bids and you decide you just can't physically do it right now, you could wait. But it's just risky. All of them are risky.
Yeah. And yes, you know, you know, I mean, even though that then needs to be done, but, but I just don't like the way that. This is going to get, I guess, I paid for it, but.
Okay.
And then two, I guess, as we buy the new ex water meters. I'm just curious, you know, it's where that money's going to come from. Even though that in the last ones, you know, that, that kind of build out and I think to each, I guess, resident, you know.
I thought we talked about taking our share from sales tax dollars. To, to cover the meters. Cause it was, to start like seven hundred and some thousand dollar.
Give me about eight hundred grand. You have about four fifty, four fifty of it in grants. Three fifty is going to have to come from somewhere. I don't know if you have a meter replacement fee on your water bill or.
Yeah.
Do you? Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, that's, that's small. Even though I guess it's a rental fee, you know, a meter that you bought, but.
Sure. So I can't, I don't, I don't know the answer. I'm sure Monty has an answer, but that's how most towns do it, but.
Yeah, I don't think we'd do an assessment for the, the meters. That's not, for sure, Matt.
Well, you have that or you do it the same way you hasn't done before, you know?
Charge out per house, per meter holder.
Oh, cool. Thank you. All right, so. I think, Monty, if you would email those out so everybody's got them, but, um, we went through them all, they're all needed. There's, there's a map and there's a list of the, the spots. Each page corresponds to a number that shows another photo of what's going on in each spot and the recommendation for wire, electrical, where. That was from the facility plan, but the engineering report from in July.
Monty, you were just talking about the, how we're going to pay for the water meter replacement, our portion after the state share. Did we talk about sales tax dollars for that or, or continue to do it the way we've done it in the past? On our water meter.
Which projects go and how they come in. Again, it was going to be local funding, sales tax dollars, ARPA, Prairie Dog. Combination of all of the above. I mean, we do have the option. I don't know if it'll affect how we select, but we would have the option of also putting a fee on the utility.
I think, I think a fee makes sense, Monty. It's none of my damn business, but these meters, guys, this is, I mean, twenty years, every twenty years we're replacing water meters. That makes use. That's just, so it's, it's just, it's something that is not going to go away. It's not a hundred year life project. There's mechanical things, so. Just if, you know, if you're thinking about that whole process, it just makes sense to keep something going on and on and on.
And we do have a meter replacement on our bills right now that we've been collecting on since these new meters went in. So there is a little over quarter million in that fund right now, so.
That'll take care of most of it.
Yeah, yeah, that'll cover the majority of our share, yes.
And you're not ending that, right? What's that? You're not ending that?
No, you don't. No, just keep going on.
So Jared, like this number four. Is that, so it says pipe sag.
Yep.
The run approaches, working with city sewage system.
So, yep, that would be one of the two sags that we have in this.
That looks pretty, not so bad compared to that one. That's, that looks damn near like it's going to cave in tomorrow.
Good. Problem with that, that one right there is that the piece of pipe on the top is dislodged and starting to, you know, make its way down. And that creates blockages and potential backups and big trouble, so. Yep, two, like I mentioned, two of them are sags and so this is right after this is cleaned, right? So you just sent the jetter truck through and all the dirt and debris out of this, so it's, it's the day after. What happens in these spots is if there's a sag, you know, it's holding two inches of water, well, it's going to be holding two inches of gravel in a week. And other stuff at, you know, in a month and, and over time, those, that's where those spots build up. And when you have to jet and clean and continuously clean out those spots. So your system's pretty good really, but these, these are, those are the two worst sags though that we can cross.
Okay, we do have a motion. We do have a second. More discussion? Casey, would you, would you frame it differently if you were to make the motion?
Well, I would just like to see, see all of that work, I guess. All that stuff would be, I guess, a special assessment.
And that'd be citywide then, correct?
No.
Nope?
No, it could be.
It's supposed to be on the block that it's on, yeah.
So there's like seven or eight different special assessment districts?
Cause you never smell, I guess, it's probably.
Monty, we have a water break on our system on water and link those in and take them on air section or whatever. Do that with air. What is the funding for? Tell us that bill bill.
If it is on our side of the curb stop, it's paid for on the city's existing funds that are budgeted.
So the repairs that we're looking at on this particularly that we're going off the bid, this is, this is all on city side equipment that's exactly there, right?
Yes, yes, yep.
And, and maybe I'm not pairing apples to apples, but these are, these are potential failure spots?
Yes, yep.
Is, is it, is it apples to apples comparing that to, uh, to a watering break on the water activity system?
You know, if you're asking me, I think it, it's probably similar to that. I, I mean, if we're going to line the sewer mains, which I do think needs to happen. And I guess those, those costs, those lining costs need to be assessed appropriately. If you decide to pay for this, these repairs and defer those costs and could you consider adding that to the special assessment in three to five years? On something like that, if there was a project like that, Pat? Maybe? No, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think, I think we have done that. And certainly when we did the street project, we did some, some repairs and ended up with all the surface there and they became part of the special assessment. So I understand where, where Casey's coming from with this suggestion there, but. We, we kind of dabble in both arenas, special assessment, we do a private health factor. Uh, but when we have an actual failure, we do a repair. And then it seems that we, we utilize in our. Our repair budget, if you will.
All I was trying to say is that if you decide you're not going to special assess it right now, I still think you have that option too. If you do a more comprehensive repair project in a few years. But I, that's your choice, right? I just think it's, you have that option.
Monty, how do we do, uh, special assessments? Like number eight is there by, just, just by the elementary? That's by itself. So would you do an assessment district just for each, each one of these? How do you determine that if it's?
Well, you create the district based on what you want to do. Like Jared said on that street project or Dan said, on that street project, they did break it down. That this area was assessed to these people, the special assessment board did that themselves. That a portion went to everybody and then the, the main area affected was assessed to those property owners in that block or continuous area. Because otherwise you're creating, you have to go through the process, create a district for each spot that you're doing.
Right.
Publish it. Fortunately, it's water sewer. You don't have to do a resolution of necessity in hearings because water sewer is exempt from that portion. But then, then you go through the process that we've done with other, every other special assessment, yeah.
You could include multiple areas within one district though.
Yeah.
Multiple separate areas. Like you've probably seen those ads in Tribune where they might have six different. Street areas all over, but they're under one special assessment district. So they only have to go through the.
Just a matter of laying it out so that everybody knows, okay, for this section, this is what's involved and for this section, this is.
Right. And also that the assessment committee assesses the benefits appropriately just to those.
Right.
Including the improvement area.
Yeah, right.
So you're thinking?
Yes.
I think we have to answer one critical question is that if we do a spot repair on a block of clay tile sewer main. We're going, they're going to ask if, if this is taking care of the full problem and it's not, because the full problem isn't fixed until we line the sewer main. Just want you guys to keep that in mind, okay? Cause, cause we could do an assessment now and then they get another one in three years when we do the rest of it. Or you could put it off. I just want everybody to know there's still work to be done on that block, okay?
So then two, I guess, why don't we just do the full project then?
Just do all the spot repairs and line it all in one shot and assess the entire? Cause basically it's, it's spread across the entire city except for north of two hundred.
Yeah, but you're, yeah, I guess that'd be up to you. You're still going to be looking at those areas, kind of like they did with the street project.
Which have more benefit.
These people, so they get that cost and it was broken down and then this street costs this many dollars. So then it was, what was the benefit to this group and then? It's, it's not a citywide assessment basically, except maybe a small portion of it.
Is there any clay tile on the north side of two hundred?
No. I'm, I hate to give you numbers, but let's just say if it's fifty blocks and it's thirty grand a block, it's probably one point five million or something to do all the lining. So if you draw that district, I can, I can figure out that those assessments are facing pretty fast. Which is, this is where we're at right now. So we can either pause or I can go forward bidding or do whatever you guys want.
Well, we still have a motion and we have a second.
So, um, yes, motion, no. None of that has to do with how it's going to get paid for. We're just sending out for bids.
We can still set up for bids. We can get the bids back and we can, we can not move forward on the spot repairs.
That's all the motion.
Are we skipping a critical step though? Should we, we need to create a district before bidding or does that matter?
Well, for specials, if you go with the specials, you would, yeah.
We're out of order then. And I could delay this part of this if you guys want to think about it. I would like, we do need to get the water meter stuff bid. And the alley stuff would be, it makes sense.
We should get that bid, yeah.
But this, this is not, this is not passing script at all.
So your, your motion.
So can I change my motion to just include the alley and the water meter? Motion to amend it?
You said two things.
I just, I heard that. We love you with those two words.
Two.
Do we, do we need to bid on, or do we have to make, vote on the first motion and second, or can we just dismiss that?
Well, no, you're, we're amending the motion to only do the alley and the water meter replacement and then.
And that, if, if you get a second on the amendment, then vote on that and then you'll vote on amended motion.
Okay, we have amended motion. And I need a second. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Aye.
Omenour.
Aye.
Motion three. Now we have a motion and a second on the original. No, I'm.
On the amended.
On the amended.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenour.
Aye.
So then, and, and so that's easy, you know, we'll just, we'll just chop that out of these set of plans, still advertise. I think what you're asking me though is I should probably just take that, the map of the clay tile and just draw a box around it. And give you guys an estimated cost of what the clay tile lining is with these spot repairs included as a cost, just to give you an idea of what that, what that is, okay? I'll do that.
I think that's what the, right?
Do you guys want to?
Dan?
Would there be any grant funding out there for lining?
That is your guys' problem, is you guys don't qualify for anything on the sewer side. That's right, yeah. We haven't in the past.
So that would be an assessed project, fully.
You could, you could get the, you know, government subsidized two percent interest loan that you could spread out over twenty years. When I give you the cost estimate, that's probably what I'll just show at the bottom, what that would look like if you did that.
I shouldn't say fully assessed because the city, we have to remind them, we're a little, a portion of it.
What's that? Or ten percent sales tax, depending on the cost of the project.
Right.
Okay. Okay, okay. I can do that. That's all I got. Sorry about the long meeting, but I don't know, it's, we gotta get all on the same page when we do this stuff so that we're not map later, right? so that we're not mad later, right?
You said you guys are seeding, and, and, uh, they say, um, I've got it.
We're having a hard time hearing you, Dan. The lift station work?
I think, I, I don't know if I quite heard you, Dan, but my intention, you guys direct us to repair plans and, for the lift station spec, I, so there's two lift stations that have auto dialers that are not hooked up. We were gonna write the specification and email it to both Sweeney and maybe one or two other suppliers to ask them to provide a, a quote to meet our spec on those two lift stations, which would be to basically retrofit them with antennas and integrate those with your Skater system that you have.
Okay, but we are, we're moving forward, we're moving forward promptly on that, correct?
Yes, sir, yeah. It just, it, it's a, it's a smaller project, it just, it, it doesn't warrant a full spec book instead of plans. I think we just need like a three-page spec to have them base their bids on.
And I, I am part of asking on behalf of our water team, because we just had an incident during the sub-temperature period here where we did not, it's not one that ties that in, and we didn't get the alert, so somebody called it in late, late day at night, like 11 o'clock at night, something that could have been taken care of during the day, had it had real time, and you'd be, so.
And you, guys, please understand, you guys have about eight lift stations in town. These are the two that are the easiest, because they were done, I don't know, I can't remember what year, but 2015. So it's, it's not that complicated to retrofit them. Some of the other ones, and the lift station controlled panels probably have a 20-year life. Well, your other ones are probably already older than that, and it's not, it's a bigger project to, there's more money to do that, so we just kinda took the low hanging fruit to kinda get these, these two wrapped in first. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Let's turn off a little bit, and then we'll.
Moving on to six, we've got two permits, two local apples, one for Hazen Fitness Gaming Club and one for the Hazen Wrestling Club.
Motion to approve both applications.
Motion by Hiller.
Second.
By Pack, discussion. All payers say aye.
Aye.
opposed. 7A ordinance amendment. Monty, you want it?
As I said in the notes, I've just put something together, and Pat caught my mistakes, who has been corrected, that we'll only pay 10% on anything over half a million dollars rather than 100%. But I guess at this point, I just wanted to get it out for see if we could review it, and if there are no changes, we'll do the first reading at the next meeting, and then the second reading at the meeting after that.
So this is the buy down of the special assessment?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, because you guys have input, make sure to get that in to Monty before our first reading then, the next meeting. Thank you, Monty, for bringing that up. Okay, down to reports, water sewer.
I had some conversations with Jared this week, and we did talk about lift stations. He did indicate that we are beginning to see some issues with some of the water meters. And so he had asked me how we should move forward based upon how far we're going on our bids. And I suggested to him to use his best direction in establishing how many replacements he would need for failure here. Yeah, for the existing technologies, and go ahead and work with Monty to get those things on order. Because those are the cap criteria, so we, we need to make sure that we're staying on top, because this is, regardless of which cap we go down and who we award this to, we, we still need to fix the ones that are failing between now and when we get to that point. And that's all I have for this, for this evening, Dave.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Streets.
Monty, correct me if I'm wrong on this. Dave actually got sick afterward, so he's obviously not here, but, um, a couple of things. Obviously, we plowed, I took a drive around town this afternoon. Plowed streets, you know, like main divide, you know, here, anything that had major drifting. Uh, we didn't touch a lot, and, uh, well, we did plow, like I divided it. It basically scratched off the traction, and we're down to the ice from the, from the ice storm, or the melting, anything that was left, so. For the most part, everything looks passable, and, you know, I, we're not gonna touch any more of it. Uh, and then they're almost done with the second, still need, I'm not for sure what almost done is, but.
They're still working on it, so it's in urine completion. An example, I think we didn't have it.
And that's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Casey. So I have anything at this time? Okay, and you? Dustin?
All right, so two weeks ago, we had our meeting with the police department. Officer Byer brought up that one of their shotguns is barely worn out, and it's been repaired before. And he states that it's getting harder to find parts for them. So he said that we should look at upgrading both the shotguns. So I asked him to give me some quotes on some. As you can see, he came up with a Sauer shotgun. I've never heard of Sauer guns before at all. So I did a little bit of research, they're German technology, made in Italy and imported. According to the website, there's only two dealers in North Dakota. One in Williston and one in Lotford City. No, sorry, uh, Williston and Devil's, Devil's Way. That's according to the website. I can tell you through my old sellers, I can't get them. So I, I know nothing about them, I don't know if they're good or not. I can tell you by just looking at them, they're a knockoff of a Benelli M4, which, no, Benelli's patent ran out, so there's a lot of companies from overseas knocking off their products.
As I said, it looks a bit less than a Benelli price, though.
Yes, well, um, about half of, or a third of Benelli's price. Price-wise, it looks really good. Quality-wise, I don't know, and if it does break parts availability, I don't know, you know? If we go away with another Mossberg or Benelli or Merada or something like that, parts availability, if you're pretty good on these, I couldn't tell you, I don't even know where you'd look for them. He did have a quote from Hurtler Hank on some Mossberg ones, but that kinda got.
You got it, Jim? Oh, yeah.
That kinda got dropped when, when you had this.
The stroke, yeah.
We don't want anything with the wood grain.
Yeah, it's a better.
That's what we're talking about. 800. 862. 935. And 380. 3837.
Wasn't this the one that we talked about in the meeting that day?
I don't know. We, Dave sent us all this, and we had to go on the site and look, it's got all the specs and stuff.
They have Mossberg 500s, which have been basically discontinued. There's a couple Mossberg 500s out, but not what they really have. These would be the upgraded versions.
And Dave's on there, well?
Yep.
At this time.
Well, the only thing I mentioned in that meeting, and it sounded like it's part local.
Yes.
We can, and this isn't local, or that one up there?
Part, part of the sheet is from Buzz.
But Buzz gunshot that now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna probably see if you could get that through his dealership, but he said they's not around right now.
Is anybody there able to do the gun stuff other than Dave, I'm sure, or is it just him?
I think so.
I think, I think the, the FFLs are.
Well, it's under his name, but, you know, like Shields, you know, they have 20 different employees, they can sell guns and stuff. I don't know if Dave has anybody else set up that way. I can tell you mine, I'm the only one able to do it.
And no, Dave's steering process of getting everything set up, so I don't think he has anybody else. Maybe his wife, but his wife's with him, so.
Chief Wolf, what's your, what do you, do you have a direction you wanna go on this?
I know the German parts and stuff, that one, but we can, we can do more research and stuff, too. Doesn't have to be.
Yeah, we don't have a big decision on this tonight, but, and we'd be getting two, you said, two shotguns?
I would think it'd be best to have similar, otherwise they can qualify with two different shotguns every year.
We don't qualify with what?
Well, you don't qualify with.
How much is, no, not second one, how much is that, 500?
5, 590?
Oh, no, 862.
When you guys are ready, when the two of you and make decision, I, we have.
We have time.
Monies, yeah, and we have monies in the budget, so, yeah.
I, I'm with Jerry, I guess, too, I, I would rather support local and lots of guns on.
We have five options, and only one is non-local? I, I'd like to throw that one out, too, but that's, that's me.
AJ did all the research, because he knows the weapons he cleans, I mean.
Yeah, he knows them, more than I do.
With the 22s, I don't think we need the $100 ones just to shoot a scum or a rabbit in town.
Okay.
We don't want to use that. The nine or 40 to handle that load of travel.
Dustin, anything else?
Um, yeah, so I also asked Tony to give us a quote for one of those PTV pickups that we did talk about, which he did get a quote, and this is through Cap Fleet, and it is just for the pickup of, and the quote was for $63,603, and it is on the lot and is available. So I'd like to make a motion to purchase this pickup. And that is just for the pickup. He's still working on getting a quote for upfitting charges. I would imagine nothing from our Tahoe is gonna fit in this pickup.
Okay, we have a motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Pack. Discussion. Yes.
Probably 8 to 10,000 extra for outfit?
The last one cost 8,000, and that was to move, to hold stuff over and modify it to get it to work. So I would imagine we're probably looking at possibly 20,000 to outfit this. I can see how you're doing in there, especially with this system there.
Well, can, can you explain how the outfit would look on the pickup?
Um, so the way it works with this company is if you have them outfitted, when it gets here, all you have to do is put your license plates and your insurance in it, and we wouldn't buy a new radio from them. But the wiring and all that stuff would be there, from my understanding, where you just plug and play type of thing. And then, I guess it depends on whether we purchase a new radar unit or not, which I'd probably say no, because we just bought that other radar unit to.
Well, it's not new, it's from, from.
From SERP, but I guess that would be up to Chief Wolf and Tony and the other guy, or other officers, whether that would be in this quote or not.
Yeah, we can, we can take it work with the electronic communications.
Yeah.
The, the new light bar we got for the old one, I don't know if that's gonna fit, or not.
That's the other thing, you know, to me, it'd almost be easier just to get just about everything ready to go, turn the T package, it's graphics on it and everything. We do it all there, so you don't have to go design code, get graphics, and take it here, get this.
That took a month last time alone.
Yeah, well.
What do we do with the green ones, since it's a black unit?
What's a black unit?
It is black.
Yeah, we, we just do the green one.
Let's do that, Jim? Okay.
You know, so this motion is just to purchase the vehicle.
Right.
Where this guy that we've been kinda working with is on vacation right now, and that's why it's taking a little bit to get the upfitting quote, because it's a little more detailed of what you get, and it really fluctuates costs, so.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, discussion. So I'm just curious, you know, you know, if, if it may be, then I guess we should wait until that we know, know the total cost of the whole this package.
Problem if we wait, the pickup might not be available. You know, he's only, he's already got what he's gonna get for the year by the sounds of it. And once they're gone, I don't know how many are there, I do know this particular one is there and available. I think he told me that he's got some Durangos coming in here shortly, too, that would be available, but, after talking to the officers, didn't sound like they really wanted to go the Durango route.
No.
It's a little bit smaller, you know, plus, you know, we do have a GM dealership here for water to work, or stuff like that, so.
That's what I'm saying, this rental cost would be, be about the same, whether, whether the type of vehicle that you want, whether you're gonna equip them with light bars or radio and all that kind of stuff? So that would be a cost that would be sunk into any vehicle that we would have painted?
That'd be correct, unless somehow we could get a tow, maybe we could modify the stuff we already have to work again. You know, but how many times do you modify it to work?
But we've been having that topic conversation for months and months and months.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, yeah, if you were gonna buy a Durango, it'd be the same thing. Upfit charger to be roughly about the same if a guy went with the Durango as this pickup.
More discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich, aye. Pack, aye. Hiller?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Omenhour?
Aye. Motion carried. There you go.
So I got, Mr. Wolf wants to add anything?
Thanks, Jared. Thanks for reading here, Joe. Hey, Buster's not here, HCD and nothing of the mind. All right. Airwork service agreement. Let Monty attach that info. Monty attached that info.
As stated in the notes, this is kind of like every third year that we have to redo the agreement with Airmark. Kind of locks us into some of the pricing, obviously. They do have some increases over the year, but. And we can, as I said, select what we really, if we need more or less of something. This is for basically all the rubs and the towels and all the other things that are used here at City Home.
Monty, are there other options or?
There is a company called Sintas, but the last time we checked, their pricing was higher than this. And I honestly didn't check with them this time when I got this from Airmark. I can, if you prefer to wait.
How much am I? Go ahead and down, sorry. How much of an increase, Monty?
He didn't have a specific. It's usually anywhere from three to five percent. He's told me here. And there again, these are every time they come that we get all of these items.
This is just an inventory, what we went through in the last year, I'm assuming.
Yep.
Now, you've been happy with their products so far, Monty?
Yeah.
I know this is who we use at Cattell and it as well, and he's a great job. But if you guys want to wait? Dan, do you want to wait and see? Sintas have?
You know, I know we've got history and sometimes changing brands and all that kind of stuff can, can cause a lot of disruption and stuff like that. But sometimes I also feel we've got a responsibility to assist and make sure that our so-called partners and stuff like that are keeping their purpose. What I, is it a lot of research or is it? On my part, what do you have to go?
Yeah, I'll just contact Sintas and ask them for a quote and give them a rough idea of what we're getting from the competitor.
I would like to see that. Is there any harm in, if we? The motion?
No, no.
I would like to see that, yes.
Okay.
Does it cost?
And maybe we've been, if anybody were to ever have a question on that.
Okay. We'll do that then. Ten B. Auto retainer from Rath and Bear. Monty just got that information. If you can see by his notes, it's the price of eleven thousand for the audit.
And again, I had reached out to them by email last week because I hadn't heard anything from them yet. And we usually hear from them in November that they're scheduling audits for the year. Because I know there was stuff going around the listserv that they are cutting back on some of their audits that they're conducting. So I was kind of pleased when we got the better.
We need a motion to accept the agreement.
Some more votes.
From my pillar.
Second.
Second by Weidrich, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Hi.
Weidrich. Hi. Hack. Hi. Stern. Hi. Omenhour.
Hi. Motion carried, thank you. Eleven A, resolution confirming assessments that is approved in project district twenty twenty-two dash oh one.
This is just to finalize after the, the changes made last meeting when you approved twenty percent on the assessments. This is the final product ready for certification to the county then next year.
Just to clarify, what is the difference between the one we did at the last meeting to approve that and this one here? You're saying that there's just the final?
This is just the resolution necessary to complete the special assessment process.
Okay.
So.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
And second by Hack, discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich. Hi. Hack. Hi. Pillar.
Hi.
Stern. No. Omenhour.
Hi, motion carried. All right, twelve A. Twenty twenty-three and twenty-four budget amendments which are attached. Monty sent.
The first one would be the twenty twenty-three budget amendments. Uh, the sheet I have up here. Basically, we are amending the twenty twenty-three budget to, to reflect the one point two million dollars in revenue received above what was estimated. And then to also amend the expenditure budget by four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars and change. Again, this is a process required.
So. Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. Roll call.
Stern. Hi. Pillar.
Hi.
Hack. Hi. Weidrich. Hi. Omenhour.
Hi, motion carried.
The twenty twenty-four stuff, uh, as stated in the notes, Commissioner Weidrich met with Chief Berry and Assistant Chief LaMasters to review some of the budget numbers for the twenty-four fire requirement budget. And he had some recommendations of changes. As stated, it does not change the overall ending amount. Some of the numbers you guys were looking at when you reviewed this with them, they were actually the twenty-three budget numbers, so it did change the twenty-four budget numbers. It actually increased the amount that you wanted for the new equipment reserves by a couple of thousand dollars. So I guess in order to make those changes, you're gonna have to have a motion to approve. So moved.
Motion by Hack. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Hack. Hi. Stern. Hi. Pillar.
Hi.
Weidrich. Hi. Omenhour.
Hi, motion carried. Twelve B, lot purchase request. So Ole Sletton has inquired about some properties across the main street from highway, from the city shop area. Monty will highlight it here. He's doing a lot more work in the Beale Hazen area and was thinking, you know, when I talked to him about a month and a half ago, he was, you know, he would like to have a spot here in town instead of bringing stuff from near Price where he has the stuff now. And I said, you know, Ole, we appreciate you doing business here and that you do stuff for us quickly. I said, just park your stuff there. I, I wouldn't even have a problem with him just using that area, but now he actually wants to buy it and build a, build a shop. Nope, nope, right there. No.
This one is high.
Sorry. Yep, yep, yep.
Um, you know, there's, to me, I don't, I'm not, I'm not interested in selling it myself. I think it's a kind of prime property in, in city limits. It's got water, it's got power, there's a lift station across the road from there that, that supports all that really well. I don't know, uh, Monty, do you agree? I'm not sure what we put out for a price tag, but.
A lease agreement instead of selling it.
What if he wants to build though? If he wants to build a shop?
All I saw was water supply and store equipment there, but maybe when he says store, maybe he wants to some, to put things in. Yeah.
Yeah, when, when he and I talked, he, 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 uh, indicated that he appreciated the opportunity, but in the winter, you know, they have things ready to go and warm or at least in a, not covered in snow. Um, that makes a big difference for him to be ready to, you know, emergency use, whatnot, so. Monty, did he say anything to you about building?
No, he did not.
But if we, yeah, so.
But if we sold it to him, he could.
If we sold it to him, he did, and we wanted to, well, we have to approve it, but. But I can't see those numbers there, Monty.
Oh, sorry.
Is that what we had into that?
No, this is, this is based on what other commercial lots in the area are valued at. These are both privately held by the same person. You can see that they're basically at fifty-seven cents a square foot, right around sixty-six. All of these commercial lots are basically right around the sixty cents, except the one, and this is actually the grocery store lot. So that's a, that's a major improved lot. And so going off some of those numbers, these would be what we're looking at. I know at one time when we were selling some of the other lots, we were looking at one half of the value that they're assessed at, which brings them closer in line with, with where they would be based on the size. I mean, if you take half in this forty-four thousand, you're at twenty-two thousand for, which is close, and I guess it's not comparable to this one really, but. I know that was discussed at one time, so. But I mean, we can start obviously at, at the higher number. And if he wants to negotiate or make an offer, then he can make an offer. As far as I know, what these were offered, like it was platted, yeah.
You anticipated my question.
Yes, I did.
But obviously, just because I don't think there's stonism and that's the decision, so you guys.
If, and that, that's the whole lot where their headband suggestion of putting a new hotel and stuff like that?
Yes. Yes.
Where we, where we put the temporary room and that stuff?
Yes.
Actually, that's the platted street that's in there, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So then I guess. So then I guess why don't we, or how come then I guess? Over in the both lots aren't then like gone, you know, even if they're gonna build the, you know, build the, I guess. Build that egg, yes, and that motel and stuff, they would need the night both lots, but.
Though the hotel was actually planned to be just on this one lot.
So then I guess how do we lose the other one then?
That one was deeded to Williams when that was replatted. When they got all of this area here, they, they got this one commercial lot as well.
If he wants a water treatment building.
I tried to get him on that one, but he wasn't biting too hard.
Remember, it would be storing equipment and pipe and everything else. Although that's what we want on Main Street.
Okay.
Downtown Main Street, I mean, but. Anyhow, this, this isn't something that has to be done tonight, but it's something to think about. It gives, it's something we should sell or hold on to, or if, you know, it's never been offered before, so we have, if it's public property, we'd have to put it up for bid first, wouldn't we, Hack?
Well, that's what Monty said.
That was my understanding, that it was offered. I haven't found anything concrete on that. When it was taken over by the city, it was offered that one time prior to the, the ash dump, yeah, from being in there.
Okay.
You know, you raise a good point. The, those offerings, some of those are, what, from the seventies and eighties, they were tax forfeitures. And there's probably nobody with recollection, because it was all done by descriptions that you'd have to be seeking out the, this specific property even though it was being advertised for sale, but.
I would agree, it wouldn't be a bad idea if you're interested in it to advertise it.
New interest, so. Even if not required, it would just be.
Yeah. We'd also end up looking at removing the ash dump too. Yeah. That would be.
Wouldn't be like that.
That would, that would be the purchaser's obligation, yeah. Well, we would have to create another one. So it cost us money to.
Mm-hmm.
Get one up somewhere else. Yeah, I don't know if we'll be able to move that one.
No. No.
Well, we could, you know, build a similar thing up by asphalt pit or pile.
Tree down period, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Would be all right, because then they, when they do load out ashes, they could just grab that right away too.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's more. More just, uh, information right now, so something to think about. Okay.
And there again, if you offer for bids, you can put them on like we've done with the other properties too, so.
All right, that brings us down to thirteen public comments. We have no public here this evening, so then promote bills. So. Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich. Hi. Stern. Hi. Hack. Stern. Pillar.
Hi.
Omenhour.
Hi, motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thanks, Dan.